Should we do it?
Yes.
I bought you food and drinks, and you only bought me one drink, so it's not even yet.
If I keep the tab, I bought you three times.
Scott, Terry. You guys ready? All right, good evening, everyone. We will convene the September 12th meeting in the Garden Grove City Council and Successor Agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Councilmember Beer?
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Tuha Wen?
Here.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yeah.
Councilmember Clofenstein?
Here.
Councilmember Kim Wen?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. Can I ask Kingsley O'Carrolliki to give us an invocation, and then Councilmember Clofenstein to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Dear Lord, as we gather here this evening to discuss and make decisions on issues before us, provide us with the guidance and wisdom necessary to make the best decision for this fine Garden Grove community of ours that we serve. Amen.
Please place your red hand over your heart. We pledge our allegiance to this great country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a couple of presentations tonight, starting with a presentation from Dr. Rowe from Garden Grove Hospital, and he plans to give us about a 10-minute presentation, including a PowerPoint, I believe.
I won't make the joke about 30 minutes. Well, thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers, for allowing us to present to you today. I've been at Garden Grove for about a year and a half now as the CEO here and also Huntington Beach, and the hospital's been around for quite a while, and it's just when I got here talking to the city council, the mayor, the city manager, the police, the fire department, it became very clear that the hospital and the community haven't been that involved together over the years, which is not uncommon for small community hospitals with bigger people coming up in other cities. But I wanted to reconnect, and we've been doing that well over the last year and a half, so I wanted to just reacquaint you with some of the things we're doing at Garden Grove Hospital. And just, I will take the 10 minutes. The slide's coming up. Will they be up there or are they behind me? Because I'll have to turn.
Behind you, yeah.
I'm not going to get back. All right, I'll have to wing it for the first part of the slide, but we're here to serve the community. It's a community acute care hospital. It's the only hospital in Garden Grove, and I'd just like to make sure we understand that because our commitment is to serve the needs of the community. So when I arrived a year and a half ago, the first people I met were city leaders, the county leaders. What do you need from this hospital and this community? One big thing was behavioral health. It's a big issue all over Orange County and all over California. Certainly, it's a big issue in this country, but I'm focused on what we can do for Garden Grove. So coming up later, I'll talk to you about some of the things we're hoping to do that we think are rather innovative. Hospital was established in 1982, but some of you might remember Palm Harbor Hospital was, I think, on the same site from the '60s. So we've been in existence since 1982. It's the only acute care, again, hospital in Garden Grove. 600-plus employees, over 300 physicians, almost 1,000 people associated staff with that hospital, so one of the largest employers in Garden Grove, and I think that's an important factor, too, because we are an economic engine as well as serving the healthcare needs of this community. We are generating income for the community, too. You can see over 24,000 emergency room visits. That's your residents, we're taking care of, that sometimes don't have the means to get somewhere else, so we're very proud of that. We have emergency services, just like any other community hospital, acute care, intensive care, emergency room, as I already said, critical care, surgical services, four beautiful ORs up there. We also have maternity services. That's been going on for years and years. Neonatal intensive care unit, so we can care for those babies that are a little higher risk when they get delivered. We have a perinatal clinic for those high-risk deliveries. There's a lot of need for high-risk monitoring during pregnancy for some populations, and so we're meeting that need. We also have wound care services, and we provide our own dialysis services. One of the things even my own staff are not too well aware of, so I want to make you aware, is some of the award-winning care we deliver at Garden Grove Hospital. Sometimes we just forget all the good things we're doing every day, but we've been named the top 5% of the nation for patient safety, three years in a row. Just recently, top 5% of the country for labor and delivery, so delivering a baby here, patient outcomes and everything else, top 5% of the country. Top 10% for GYN surgery, and top 15%, that's the five-star rating from Healthgrades in pacemaker insertion, gallbladder surgery, as well as hip fracture treatment. So these are all parameters this Healthgrades Agency does monitor us for, and it's nothing we produce. So it's very proud of the team and the physicians at Garden Grove Hospital. We've applied recently to become a stroke receiving center with joint commission. That's a national accrediting body for most hospitals, as well as the receiving centers. So we expect them out in November to survey us. We've been planning for it, working hard at it since April. We do a lot of community education, a lot of focus on training our own employees. Every single employee has to learn what the stroke symptoms are, and so we've been actively working at that. As part of that, we've introduced telemedicine to the hospital. We have 20 neurologists available within 30 minutes anywhere in the country, and we have a patient come to the ER and presents with stroke symptoms. We also are working on our behavioral health. We do not have a behavioral health unit yet. Prime Hospitals has four Orange County hospitals, West Anaheim, La Palma, Huntington Beach, and Garden Grove. Huntington Beach and La Palma and West Anaheim have behavioral health centers, and so those can help support us. But we're looking a couple of years down the line to putting about 24 beds of a geriatric behavioral health unit, because there's a lot of need of our elderly to focus on those needs. In addition, we've added to help us with the needs and meet those immediate needs. We can get psychiatrists, again, 20 psychiatrists available with telemedicine within 30 minutes anywhere in the country that I can locate them. We have a 24-hour call center, which is very unique, first one in all of prime health care, and we have 24/7 operators sitting in Huntington Beach, actually, taking calls from physicians' offices, clinics, other hospitals, the street, the police department, the fire. We need help placing a behavioral health patient because it's very difficult once a patient with behavioral health needs gets into the ER to get them placed in a facility that can properly take care of them. Very difficult, not just for us, but for any hospital in California. So we're working on that to help anyone, not just our own facilities. We are establishing an ER psychiatric clinical decision unit. Most of you have heard of a 51-50 hold. That's where a patient against their will doesn't want to stay in the hospital, and we need to keep them there to protect themselves or protect the community. It's very, very difficult to get some of those patients placed, and they're in the emergency room in a very busy, noisy, hectic place, not a place to de-escalate if you're having a crisis. So we're building, and finished, actually, it's almost built out, and hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have six beds totally devoted to behavioral health, part of our ER but separate from our ER, where we'll have the telepsychiatry, we'll have behavioral trained nurse practitioners and nurses caring for those patients, which right now we're just kind of holding until we can get them better level of care. Very excited about that. We also are connected with the community. We provide, you know, we know we have a very diverse community, so we provide languages and most of our literature to meet our most common languages here. We do a lot of free health screenings, community outreach. I won't go through each one of them. Stroke education is big right now because part of our certification, we have to educate a lot of the public on stroke. And then we do a quarterly first responder barbecue. We're very proud to work with the police and the fire department, the other paramedics in close collaboration, so every quarter, Mayor Jones came to the last one, we just provide a barbecue for the first responders. Anybody who's available, come over and have a barbecue, just to increase that collaboration. And just some of the events we've done recently, sidewalk CPR. You can see the gentleman in the top right corner, that's our ER director. I think next year I'll get him a tent because it was pretty hot that day, and we literally, you see it's next to the sidewalk? It's sidewalk CPR. We get anybody walking by, say, hey, you want to learn how to do CPR. Adding those people with those skills in the community helps our community health improve. And there's some of the shots from the barbecue. I know the guys have a lot of good time. So that is for me. I just appreciate the opportunity to speak to you and to kind of connect again. Any questions for me?
Thank you very much for coming. Yeah. Okay, and the second is a community spotlight in recognition of CHOC's 2017 ambassador, Jordan Jackson, for serving as the face of this year's CHOC Walk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council pays tribute to a young member of our community whose constant and meaningful work to raise awareness for sickle cell disease has earned her the prestigious title of 2017 CHOC Walk Ambassador. She's already forward. I wanted to ask her to come forward. Children's Hospital of Orange County has been committed to providing the highest quality medical care to children since 1964. CHOC Walk in the Park, the only outside fund-raising charity event that takes place at Disney Resort, began 27 years ago to bring the community together and raise funds for healthcare programs, education, and research. As the 2017 CHOC Walk Ambassador, Jordan Jackson of Garden Grove served as the public face of the event, which raised over $2.3 million. To Jordan, CHOC has been a sort of a second home. According to her mother, CHOC has been treating Jordans for sickle cells since she was seven months old, and to show their appreciation, the Jordans family made a commitment to help other kids going through the same battle through a commitment to successful fundraising effort they call Jordans Journey. And with that, at this time, the mayor and city council would like to present Jordan Jackson with a certificate and a memento in recognition of her title of 2017 CHOC Ambassador. Congratulations, Jordan.
Okay, now, Isaac?
Stand and push it.
Okay.
Stand to the face. You all are this way.
Okay, and we'll now move on to oral communications. I have several cards. I'll start with Joe Loricchia. Here.
Mr. Mayor, Council? I've been here a couple of times in the past few months about the short-term rentals. I just need, I'm looking for some clarification because I talked to Ralph Hernandez with code enforcement a couple of weeks ago. He had called me. He said that there is nothing in writing that says, like we spoke back when I was here in July about 30 days. He says there's nothing in writing, so I want to know, is there something in writing or is there not something in writing, and can we put something in writing? We know, like, when I came in March, we had two. July, we had three. Today, we have four rentals on our street. So it's, so that means if I come in November, we're going to have five. I mean, that seems to be the rate it's going. Nothing is happening. This started two years ago, and it's getting out of hand. I mean, Anaheim's had the problem, we're getting it now. The guy next door to me, there's somebody there six days a week, and somebody for two days, somebody for one day, somebody for a week. So I just, I'm looking for an answer. Is there something in writing or is there not? Because last meeting, I was under the assumption there was something. So I mean, is there?
Thank you. So it's oral communications. Technically, it's not supposed to be an exchange. I will, in this instance, just accommodate you and say that I think I was under the impression that, too, that we had some sort of an ordinance that didn't allow.
Right.
And then I came to find out we don't, so it's just per code, a single-family home is allowed to be used for a short-term rental?
Mayor, under our zoning code, it has a list of permitted activity, and the code specifically says that if it's not permitted, it's prohibited, and short-term rentals are not permitted in the residential zones. It's not one of the permitted uses. So we do cite, the problem is you have to catch them red-handed, you know, because, you know, it is a citation, it is a criminal-type proceeding, so we have to actually catch them red-handed when we go out there to try and identify, you know, the fact that they have actually rented it in violation of our code, no one's there. I think that the property owners are telling the renters, don't open the door, don't talk to anyone, and so we're working on establishing procedures to better get a handle of prosecuting the violation of our zoning code.
Yeah, because I know my son lives out of state, and he contacted, I don't know, through Craigslist. In fact, I forwarded the info to Ralph Hernandez, and he was emailing back and forth to the lady. She would not give the address of the house until you actually make a reservation, but the pictures of the house are the house next door to me. And then she says, we ask you, she told my son, we ask you to be, you know, courteous to the neighbors because they love us in the area and we want to keep it that way. And it's like, wow, that's a big statement to take out of my mouth that I love you. But like I said, it's gotten to the point, and I've talked to Stephanie about it, a few weeks ago, we had, there was a group of girls, I don't know if it was a bachelorette party or weekend getaway, but we have a little short wall between the two of us, and my wife went out to go to the market Sunday morning, and there's a pregnancy test on the wall, you know, and like I said, I don't get it, you know, I just, and a lot of times, I know codes, what they're going to have to do is come in in the evening, because the people are at Disneyland or they're out during the day, so they have to come at night, you know, when somebody's there, and I know it's after hours. Code's off the clock already by then, but we just, if something, we can do something because, like I said, any, the next house goes for sale, it's going to be a short-term rental, and they all know each other. Excuse me, that's the thing. They all know each other. Every owner knows each other. So it's gotten really bad, but like I said, we just, just this week, got the fourth one, so the next house that goes, we're going to have another one. So I just really want to instill, we need to stop this before it gets really bad.
Thank you for coming. Sorry you have to keep coming.
Thank you very much.
I know, I know Councilmember Clofenstein has a meeting scheduled for this Thursday with our housing staff, and we're, there's always legal complications on these things, but we're searching for ways to be more proactive about it.
The main thing tonight was, is there something in writing or isn't there? Because I'm hearing one, you know, and not the other, and we were, you and I were both under the impression that there was something, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, sir. Gloria Bram.
Gloria Bram, I live on Acacia Villa. Last Sunday, when we had the rain, heavy rain, when it stopped, I wanted to go shopping. I had been inside all week because of the heat. I go out to my car parked on Acacia Parkway, because there's not enough parking for everybody at my place, and there was a four-to-five-foot-wide stream running down the street on my side of the street. The other side of the street had a, you know, one-inch little bitty stream. I was fortunate that my persnickety car decided to let me unlock the doors automatically, and I climbed through the back and entered from my driver's side. This has happened every time we have rain, not just a heavy rain, any kind of rain whatsoever in that street, which has a sewer drain in the, you know, right in the center of, I don't understand why it's always flooded, but it is hazardous to cross for seniors, and I don't understand why it happens, and I would like something checked into to see if there's any mitigation that can be done. I mean, it's bad enough I have to park my car on the street. I don't want to have to swim to it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll ask our Public Works to look into it. Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. This is a badge that's being circulated right now. It is in support of the Veterans Cemetery in Orange County, and hopefully it's going to happen. Right now, it is on the agenda of the Irvine City Council. If they approve it, we will have our own Veterans Cemetery in Orange County. If you visit a Veterans Cemetery, off in the distance, you'll probably hear rifle fire from the volley and the playing of taps, but what you probably won't hear is a loud "whack," followed by another "whack," and many more to follow. This occurred when they had the funeral for Michael Mansour. That noise was members of the Navy SEAL team embedding their SEAL badges into the lid of the coffin of Michael Mansour. Last Friday, there was an event at Garden Grove High School honoring Michael Mansour and dedicating the new stadium in his name. It was a great ceremony, and it's proper that we honor our heroes, but at the same time, let's not forget the people who are serving right now in the far corners of the world to protect us. Yesterday was September 11th. Now, I built a 20-foot flagpole in front of my home so that I can fly my flag, weather permitting, and on occasions like yesterday, fly it at half-staff. I hope all of you have a flag in front of your homes to show your support of our great country. If you don't have one yet, two blocks from this very site is a Home Depot. They have flags on sale all year round at a very minimal cost. So again, I hope that if you don't have a flag, you will get one and put it up proudly in front of your home. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly O'Connor.
Hi, everyone. I'm new at this, so I live in the city of Westminster, and the reason I'm here is because we've had a huge issue with theft in the motels that are on Garden Grove Boulevard and Trask. The people from those motels come over to my neighborhood, which is right behind Costco on Trask and Hoover, and they ride their bikes, and they steal, and they scare people, and it's the motel owners that should be held responsible for these people. They shouldn't be there. They're sex offenders. There are prostitutes, and I've seen many prostitutes, and I want to know if there's anything that the city council is going to be doing about that. I guess you can't answer me, right? Okay, that's fine. It's become a huge problem, a big, big problem. We are, I live in a neighborhood where some of us do patrol the area, not like vigilantly, but what I say to everybody is if they see somebody suspicious, call the police. But I've driven down that street in one of, or down the driveway in one of the motels, and what really bothered us when we were driving there is there was a Garden Grove Police Department, Garden Grove Police Officer driving in his car. We went all the way around into the back, and then we had to turn around, and he was coming out, and he stopped. He says, what are you guys doing here? This neighborhood isn't good for you. So he was looking for somebody who robbed something, and so my husband and I had a conversation about it, and we were wondering if Garden Grove Police Department knows that that area and those hotels, or motels, I should say, are crime-ridden, why aren't they getting rid of the crime or the people that commit the crimes or putting the responsibility on the hotel or motel owners? I believe they're both owned by the same people. I think one, though, is in Stanton. I'm not sure. But we, we as a community are doing everything we can from this point on to have someone or somebody or anybody take notice and get rid of these people because we don't want them in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, and we will definitely look into that. I know exactly what you're talking about. Maureen Blackman.
Hello there, Mayor, Council, staff. I second what she said. I think it's been an ongoing issue. Prior to this, it was pedophiles. I feel like now there's drug addicts. It was paroled pedophiles that were housed there, but it's a disaster. Under that viaduct is a disaster, and you'd never pass by there without Saint Police. So I definitely would like to second that. And so today, I said, funny how things lead, one thing leads to another. Today, I started out looking for more information on Consent Item 3M, which was about a rehab, community-based traditional housing program grant and requiring the operation of a community residential care facility, and it's at 12781 Josephine. And I think I've traveled about every street in this city. I'm not Chris Phan, but I try. And so I was cur, I have been in this neighborhood before, but I hadn't noticed this facility. So I was questioning the item, and it was, was it a VA? Was it prisoner release, drug rehab? I've got some really good answers from staff, but I still have some questions. So I went for a drive-by, and the funny thing is, is what I thought I was looking for in the beginning turned out to be the least, most important thing. That neighborhood is a wreck. There is mattresses, sofas, cabinets that people have ripped out and left on the curb. It is a complete disaster over there. I don't know who's responsible for it in terms of, I know Tuha, I think it's your district. Code enforcement, surely a drive down that street would necessitate a major cleanup. I urge us all to really take a look at that neighborhood. It can't be good for the people. Two years ago, we were over there for adoptive family, and sure, it wasn't the greatest-looking neighborhood, but it's significantly gone down the tubes with this, people just throwing junk out on the street for some odd reason. You can call Republican, they'll pick it up, but it's a disaster. It really needs to be taken into consideration. I do, so I guess the rehab will be the best thing, looking over there. I did that rehab. There were some veterans out in front. I still have a question of the proprietor, who will be running it? Will it be a drug rehab? Will it be for VA? But the main thing is, is we've got to get our eyes over there. I encourage anyone who wants to come. I'll be happy to take a drive. Thank you.
Thanks, Maureen. That ends oral communications. We'll move on, we'll recess and move on to successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Certainly. Member O'Neil?
Here.
Member Tuha Wen?
Here.
Member Bowie?
Yeah.
Member Clofenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Wen?
Here.
Vice Chair Beer?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here. Consent items, we have three items. Anyone like to move the balance?
Second.
Called vote?
I did that rehab. There were some veterans out in front. I still have a question of the proprietor, who will be running it? Will it be a drug rehab? Will it be for VA? But the main thing is, is we've got to get our eyes over there. I encourage anyone who wants to come. I'll be happy to take a drive. Thank you.
Thanks, Maureen. That ends oral communications. We'll move on... We'll recess and move on to successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Certainly. Member O'Neill?
Here.
Member Tu Ha Wen?
Here.
Member Bowie?
Here.
Member Clovenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Wen?
Here.
Vice Chair Beer?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here. Consent items, we have three items. Anyone like to move the balance?
Second.
Called vote. We have no other items on there. So, any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn back to City Council. Which brings us to consent items. I would like to pull 3A. Are there any others to be pulled?
If we could pull 3M, just for the sake of going over it and having the staff read the report.
I would like to pull 3... No. 3G.
Okay.
I want to move the balance of the consent items, but with the comment that... On 3B, I'm a member... I'm employed by the County of Orange, but in this matter relates to the County of Orange Social Services Agency, I'm not a part of. So, I just wanted to disclose that. I have conflict with you.
Thank you. Okay, so, 3A.
Did you want to take a second on the ballot?
Oh, I'm sorry. Josh, I'm sorry. Yeah, second. Call the vote on the balance.
Okay.
Getting all excited there.
Seven yes votes.
Okay. Now, moving on to 3A. And in a moment, I'm going to call up Bev Harrison and Sandy Thomas and Mallory Vega to say a few words. But I have something here that I'll read. This item is to approve a proclamation declaring September 17th as World Alzheimer's Awareness Month. That's weird. Yeah, okay. "In honor of this nationwide initiative, myself and my colleagues are wearing blue in support of those affected by the disease. In Orange County, more than 84,000 people are affected by Alzheimer's, and it's the third-leading cause of death in the county. Recently, Acacia Adult Daycare Services... Adult Services and Alzheimer's Orange County announced their merger to better serve our aging population. Alzheimer's Orange County is dedicated to providing resources and services to those affected by Alzheimer's and dementia. They are strong leaders in raising awareness and educating the community about this debilitating disease." So, may I ask the representatives from Acacia to please come forward from Alzheimer's Orange County, rather? And I'd like to commend Alzheimer's Orange County for their efforts and praise their excellent healthcare services and dedicated support to the families and patients suffering from Alzheimer's. Floor is all yours.
Thank you, Mayor and council and the city. My name is Sandy Thomas, and I was previously the president on the board for Acacia Adult Day Services. And then, we merged, so our board had to kind of resign. They've asked me to be on the board for Alzheimer's OC, which I've accepted. So, I'm here on behalf of that as well. And I want to thank the mayor and members of the city council and the city for acknowledging September as Alzheimer's Awareness Month. And you've probably already alluded to this, but since 1982, Alzheimer's... Orange County has been the biggest... The county's largest local nonprofit organization dedicated to providing free education, support, and advocacy to people and families living with memory loss. And we're going through that with my aunt right now as we speak. We're so grateful for your help in raising awareness about the devastation impact of Alzheimer's disease and invite you to take part in the first steps toward dementia-free community by participating in the Walk for Alzheimer's. Again, thank you, Mayor and City Council members and the city of Garden Grove for joining us as we recognize World Alzheimer's Awareness Month. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for wearing blue. Acacia used to be maroon, and I've had to change my entire wardrobe because now I'm wearing a lot of blue. I'm very happy to say that the merger with Alzheimer's Orange County is super. It's really been an opportunity for Acacia to grow and expand the resources that we're providing to this community, certainly for those individuals who are frail or older adults that we serve, those with disabilities, and those who have dementia, and certainly their caregivers. So, it's a win-win for our community. Also, I want to note that on September 17th, Acacia will be 38 years old. It will be 38 years of service to this community. So, on that note, I want to encourage you to walk Alzheimer's. We are going to have three walks. One is going to be on October 14th in Laguna Niguel, for anyone who's in that direction. On Saturday, October 28th, it's going to be in Huntington Beach. And on Saturday, November 11th, that's when Acacia's team's going to be walking. We will be at Angel Stadium in Anaheim, and we actually get to walk on the field. So, that's always fun. There's no fee to register, and we invite folks to participate in fundraising to support our local work. All the funds stay in this county. So, 100% of the funds that we raise stay in this county. They do not go beyond our borders. Also, I wanted to let you know that if you want to enroll, register, go to www.alzoc.org/walk, or you can call our number at 1-844-Help-Alz, or 844-435-7259. So, join us. I will be there for two of the walks. I'll be down in Laguna Niguel because we have a center down there, another center down there, and I'll be in Anaheim, and I look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
Just one quick comment. My name is Bev Harrison. I'm a volunteer with Alzheimer's Orange County, and the connection that I have with them is very strong. In 2005, my husband was diagnosed with Alzheimer's, and Jack passed away from complications of the disease in 2010. The services on behalf of all caregivers that might be listening tonight or just anyone you can pass the word to, the services of Alzheimer's OC are absolutely incredible. The sensitivity to what a family is going through, the education to make us realize, you know, we're not walking the walk alone, the opportunities to share with other families that are also dealing with dementia, not just Alzheimer's, but there are many dementias out there, some as a result of traumatic injuries and others that are associated with other diseases. So, thank you to all of you here in Garden Grove for everything that you do. And the merger, as Mallory mentioned, the merger with Acacia is just a very exciting thing for everyone, and we appreciate all your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask that you not sit down quite just yet? I'd like to make a motion that we approve item 3A. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, call the vote.
Seven yes votes.
With that, I would like to present a copy of the proclamation.
I'm double-duty photographer tonight.
I would like to pull this out because I would like to point to our governing. First, I would like to commend staff for working relentlessly to continue and further the bicycle and pedestrian trail project. This section of the project is in District Number Four, and it will extend all the way from Stanford Avenue to Proco Street. And I really love this idea. I really appreciate staff working on it. But during the review of the agenda, I was a little bit surprised by the price or the cost of the design and study. And so, I had asked staff to explain to me. And after I understood it, I realized now that this is a much larger project in scope because it is crossing numbers of streets. And with that crossing, it required that we need to make sure that it doesn't cost public safety, traffic safety, for people who walk on the trail or, you know, riding bicycle. And staff have shared with us that the original... Well, staff had explained to me that this is a delicate balance that staff have to consider between, you know, an overkill design or, you know, an under design that may put the public, you know, in safety at risk. And so, I would like to ask staff to explain to the community about, you know, the right size of different options. You know, one is at a much higher price than the $119,000 cost that staff is proposing.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bowie. Explain the different options in terms of...
Well, as I received, the original estimate is at about $191,000. Is that right?
Yes.
The original proposal is at $191,000. And staff have negotiated and with consultants. And so, we limited the scope to the, you know, just the right level that it doesn't jeopardize public safety. And with that, you know, dedicated work on staff, the price is now lower to $119,000, which is about $80,000 less than the original proposal. And so, I would like staff to, you know, explain that so that the public understand, you know, how good a job, you know, your department has done.
Well, essentially, when you look at the two different... Well, the beginning and the end of the negotiation, we significantly cut down their project management costs, about $10,000 off of that, and actually increased their survey costs and increased their preliminary design because we wanted to incorporate some more things with that. But then, on our final design, we worked with them on their hours to get that down significantly. So, basically, it's just a matter of negotiating through each one of the items to make sure that we're getting what we want and not paying for things that the staff can handle.
Thank you, Bill. And I really commend you on, you know, working relentlessly on the, you know, putting the scope... Defining the scope of this work so that it's just the right amount that it does address public safety as well as allow people to really enjoy a beautiful landscape for the bike and pedestrian trail.
You're welcome.
So, with that, I would like to move... Make the motion to move this item 3G.
I'll second that.
Call the vote.
Seven yes votes.
Thank you. 3M, as pulled by Councilmember Clovenstein.
Well, we had an oral communication. Ms. Blackman brought up this particular residence and what it will be used for, obviously asking some questions if this was in any way going to be used for drug rehabilitation, or is this a VA home or facility? So, I was just wondering if staff could maybe go ahead and give the report, just to answer and clarify for the community at large.
Okay, so, I can cut to the chase and give the answer, or I can get a full report of the item?
Cut to the chase.
Cut to the chase. Okay. So, the bottom line is that the Department of Finance did have a grant that initially was opened up for kind of like a way-out house for individuals, parolees, who were just released from prison. But there were no takers. So, they still had all this funding. Under the statute, they could expand it to other uses. And so, it opened up for other residential care facilities. And we had this facility, 12781 Josephine Street, that was threatened to be closed by HUD because they weren't meeting all of the requirements, the HUD requirements. So, the Department of Veterans Affairs and two other nonprofits got together, and with the city identified that funding that opened up for veterans to continue the residential care facility for veterans. And the council at your last meeting actually authorized, in adopted resolution, authorizing the application, where we would get $2 million. $1 million would go towards our police department for equipment and other incidentals for our PD. And also, $1 million would go towards a facility for operation of the Veterans Residential Care Facility. When we submitted the resolution to the DOF, they indicated that they wanted us to make sure, and they wanted to see in the resolution assurance that the facility will be open for a minimum of 10 years. So, what you have before you is the same resolution you already approved at the last meeting. But if you look at page 187 of the agenda, we added one additional resolution, and that is that the city manager is directed to ensure that agreements or covenants are in place as a condition of program funding requiring the operation of the community-based transitional housing facility for a minimum of 10 years from the date of approval of the facility. So, that's the only change to the resolution that we're asking you to adopt tonight. And with that, I can answer any other questions that you may have.
Do you happen to have the names of the other organizations besides... I know you said they're partnering with Veterans Affairs?
Yes. Department of Veterans Affairs, and also Volunteers of America of Los Angeles, and Affordable Housing Clearing House.
Did I hear it correctly that this facility is going to be used for various purposes, one of which is for the veterans who need transition help, transitional help?
Yes, correct.
And... But it also available for parolee that are released from the prison. Is that correct?
No, that is not correct. So, the grant initially was for that purpose, but because there were no takers, there were no applications, no city or other agency was interested in that funding. And under the state's budget, they had already authorized the grant program. Then, the Department of Finance opened it up for other transitional housing uses, and that is what we're applying for, for the other uses, not for the parolees, but for the veterans' transitional housing.
So, why is it on the attachment page number? I think it's on the first, very first page. Paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4, from the bottom up. So, if you count from the bottom, paragraph number four, first page.
On the resolution itself.
Got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, that's...
It stated that whereas the city is partnering with the Affordable Housing Clearing House as property owners and Volunteers of America, Los Angeles operator, to transition the property, blah, 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 from an autistic-living facility to the community-based transitional housing for individual release from prison.
Yeah, because that is the title of the actual grant. So, we were identifying the grant program that we would be applying for.
I see.
But it's not... But we're not applying for that specific portion of the grant. We're applying it for the Veterans Affairs.
I see. I see. So, it's just the title of the grant so that we mention it here, but it's not going to be used for parolee?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
If the operator later decided to change the use to be for parolees, would they have right to do that, or would they have... Was there any discretionary action that would be required?
Well, once the state approves the grant, the money comes to the city, and we are... We will be drafting a sub-reception agreement that will... And they won't be getting a full million dollars upfront. It's $250,000 every year that the city will be passing through to the operator. And the sub-reception agreement will have, you know, the conditions for receiving... And the sub-recipient agreement will have, you know, the conditions for receiving the $250,000 per year. And obviously, one of the conditions would be that they serve the veterans. So for the, it's going to be a 10-year agreement and then it will have the stipulation what the funding is going to be used for.
Anybody?
Any other questions?
No.
No.
Do you like to move it?
Yeah, I will move it. Remove the resolution.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Okay, we now move on to public hearing items. So item 4A is adoption of a resolution approving the amended water-efficient landscaping guidelines. Madam Clerk, do you have to read the...
Yes, I'm going to read the ordinance title. It's an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove approving Amendment Number A0202017, amending and restating portions of Title IX, zoning code of the Garden Grove Municipal Code Regarding Landscape Water Efficiency Requirements. And Planning is here to provide the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem Bowie and members of the council. Before you tonight is a transmittal of a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the City Council and to request that the City Council introduce and conduct the first reading of the ordinance approving Amendment Number A0202017 to amend Title IX of the Garden Grove Municipal Code and the adoption of related implementing guidelines to update the landscape water efficiency requirements in chapters 9.08, Single Family Residential, 9.12, Multi-Family Residential, 9.16, Commercial, Office, Professional, Industrial and Open Space, and 9.18, Mixed Use, to provide updated standards for water-efficient landscapes in conformance with Governor Brown's executive order and corresponding state regulations. So just a little bit of background. The state developed a model efficient, model water, water-efficient landscape ordinance in order to establish more water-efficient design standards for urban landscapes. The model ordinance was a response to the state's ongoing drought and served as a template for local agencies to utilize in the development of their own local water-efficient landscape The most recent update to the model ordinance was called for by Governor Brown's Executive Order Number B2915. In accordance with the state's updated model, Orange County updated their ordinance and Garden Grove will be adopting the county's updated model ordinance and using it as a template to amend the appropriate sections of Title IX of the municipal code. So I'll be going into a little bit more detail of five of the key updates. It'll be reduced applicability thresholds, irrigation efficiency improvements, lower maximum applied water allowance, new prescriptive compliance option and required annual reporting. So the first key change is the reduced thresholds. It changed, it's reduced from 2,500 square feet to 500 square feet landscaped area for new construction projects, 2,500 square feet landscaped area for rehab projects. And it only applies to projects requiring building permits, plan checks or design reviews. And this just means that more projects may be applicable. The next key update is improved irrigation efficiency. There are dedicated meters that are now required for residential landscapes that are 5,000 square feet or more, and for non-residential landscapes, it's 1,000 square feet or more. Flow sensors are also now required for non-residential landscapes that are 5,000 square feet or more, and subsurface irrigation are required for areas less than 10 feet as opposed to the eight feet that used to be required. The water allowance has also been updated. The maximum applied water allowance percentages has changed and it's now for, it's separated between residential and non-residential landscapes. And it's based on the size of the landscape, the evapotranspiration number for each city, and the different hydrozones and plants, on the plant's water usage. The plant water usage has changed as well. There's a new added component of very low water that's added to that. The next key update is the prescriptive compliance option. This is available for landscapes that's less than 2,500 square feet. It's also available for new or rehabilitated landscape projects that use treated or untreated gray water or rainwater capture on site. And what the prescriptive compliance option does is it eases the process while still requiring applicants to meet the local and state requirements. It doesn't require soil tests, irrigation audits or grading plans, and that's what reduces the compliance costs, but it still ensures installations of efficient low-water use plants and irrigation systems. The last key update is the annual reporting. A report is due by January 31st of every year after implementation. A written staff report is sent to the Department of Water Resources and it kind of just talks, we have to write a staff report talking a little bit about the procedures for review of projects that's subject to the ordinance, actions that we've taken to verify the compliance, implementation measures, some challenges and some educational training that we're providing to the public. And so what this results in is more use of water conserving plants, but it still allows for varied landscapes through different hydrozones and different types of plants. So with that said, it is recommended that the City Council conduct a public hearing, introduce and conduct the first reading of an ordinance approving Amendment Number A0202017 to amend Title IX of the Municipal Code Adopting Water-Efficient Landscape Regulations, consistent with recent changes to state law as read as follows. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove approving Amendment Number A0202017, amending and restating portions of Title IX, which is the zoning code of the Garden Grove Municipal Code Regarding Landscape Water Efficiency Requirements.
We're also requesting that the City Council adopt the attached resolution that would adopt the, the guidelines for the implementation of those new regulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of staff at this time? This is a public hearing item. I don't have any cards, but is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any questions, comments or a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Call the vote.
Did you touch it? Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Was that you?
Yes, that's me.
Okay, we'll now move on to item 5, commission and committee matters. Basically, just 5A is acceptance of a resignation from Main Street Commissioner Andrew Halbertstadt. So reluctantly, I would like to move that we accept his resignation.
I'll second that.
And I'll just note that Andrew's been great involved with the community for a long time and with Boys and Girls Club and just personally in a lot of different efforts, but he's now taken a, kind of moved up in rank and taken a traveling job and he hasn't been around as much. So he felt like he wasn't able to make the meeting, so that's why he's doing this. So with that, call the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Okay, moving on to items for consideration, 6A.
Item 6A is an approval to appropriate incidental costs for project number 7008, Garden Grove Police Department Records Section remodel in fiscal year 2017-18. And Mr. Murray is here to give the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, City Council is being asked to appropriate funding for incidental costs for the police records section remodel project. On June 13th of this year, City Council awarded a contract to Tomco Construction to remodel the police department's records section for almost $800,000. Staff was still developing incidental costs for the project at that time of, of the award of the construction contract, and they were not included in that June 13th award. The incidental costs include construction management, inspection and architectural services, environmental and geotechnical testing, and project contingencies. The total amount of these incidental expenses, we're looking at about $270,000. They are, and they are detailed in the attachment on your staff report. If approved, the 2015A bond proceeds will fund the appropriation. And this concludes staff's report, and I'm available if you have any comments, questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
I don't have any question, but just one small comment. I do understand sometimes we, in a, you know, major project, we, we may need to do that in, in phrase and provide estimate in, in phrase. But for future consideration, I would really hope that we could at least have a stake on ground that, that identify the incident, incidental budget ahead of time and just put it, some, some stake on the ground, such as there will be incidental, incidental costs, which will be determined at a later time, but with an estimate at between, per se, 200 to 300, so that the council have all the information when the, when we approve the prior resolution.
Yes, sir.
Motion?
I would like to move the motion to approve item 6A.
Second.
Call the vote.
We're waiting for Mr. Bowie. Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Thank you. Okay, and that takes us on to matters. We have one item listed, and that is 7A is discussion regarding proclamation celebrating the 2017 Mid-Autumn Festival at the Atlantis Play Center as requested by Councilmember Tu Hauwen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To my, my councilmembers and to the public, is around this time of the year, we have a Mid-Autumn Festival that's celebrated by many Asian countries and especially for, for, for Vietnamese, we have this traditional holiday celebrate to dedicate for children festival. So for this year, we have partnership with the City of Garden Grove to have the Children Festival at Atlantis Park. And it's a free-to-all public, organized by different youth organizations, Orange County, especially a lot of boys, boys and girls come together to help organizing the event. We have, for the festival, we have about 200, 200 volunteers. So because of that, I would like to ask for your support and approval for the proclamations to dedicate 2017 Mid-Autumn Festival, especially for children. And I would like to invite all, everybody, public, especially Garden Grove residents to come and join the festival, enjoy the festivities, and especially it's free and we're gonna, the organizer is gonna hand out the free lanterns to all the childrens.
Just a question for context. Does that mean, do we take an action tonight to bring it back for approval of a proclamation? Okay. Would you like to move that we bring it back as a voting item at the next meeting to approve a proclamation?
Yes, I would request a move for the next council meetings. It's an active item.
I'll second that. Call the vote. I have six seconds.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Thank you. And then we'll go around the horn to Councilmember Beard.
Thank you. I'd just like to give a very brief report on our budget subcommittee. And that's to say that per the council directive, our budget subcommittee, which includes Councilwoman Kim Nguyen, Councilmember O'Neill, myself, met last, recently, September 5th. And our staff support to that is Scott Stiles. We have our finance director, Kingsley O'Gorecki, and Eifert, Maria Stipe and Sean Park. We took on a number of tasks. We've been undertaking a lot, and that's, since our last report, we've undertaken in, including, actions including, a revenue and cost specialist has been initiated, has initiated their review of the city internal service funds. There's been a lot of discussion, interest in those funds, including interviews with staff, subcommittee members, and a report to the City Council is expected sometime in October. We've conducted a review of tenure history of the fund accounts presented by, that was presented by Ann Eifert. We also did a review of business tax data as was presented by Corinne Hoffman. That was very interesting, very detailed. Maria Stipe gave a, discussed the process for surveying the community priorities and needs and determining if the current budget aligns with community priorities, identifying methods for gaining community input on the questions of alignment with the budget. So she, you should be, all be receiving copies of all the information we reviewed. So with that, I just want to give you that brief update. And Scott, do you have any comments or want to add to any of that?
Councilman, Mayor, members of council, just a couple, just follow-up things. So yeah, we've been putting a lot of staff time into this effort. We know how important it is. We have a lot of budget challenges before us that we talked about in our retreat. So one of the things we're, we're in the middle of is having revenue and cost specialists is doing a review of our internal service funds, as Councilman Beard indicated, interviewing subcommittee members, staff, and we'll be coming to the full council for an update on their report, talking about our service funds, what they're at, are they at the right levels? How are they structured, all of that? So we'll be doing that. And then what we really want to do is, as you, we have discussed in our budget retreat, with some of the real issues looming before us, we really want to make sure that we're in touch with what our community sees as their priorities. So we want to spend some time in the coming next six, seven months, really surveying some of our residents using various means to try to understand is, does our budget align with what the community is telling us? There's experts out there that can really reach out and help us understand if we're connected, if we're aligned, are we doing what our community wants? So more to come on that. We're working on it. And I know from a staff standpoint, we really appreciate the work of the subcommittee members who are really, were meeting on a two-week basis. There's a lot of time and effort that they're putting into it, and so we really appreciate your time and effort as well. And we'll keep the full council updated. As Councilman Beard said, we went through, at our last meeting, we went through a lot of data, and we gave all the council members copies of all that data that we went through. We'll continue to do that throughout the process. So more to come, and we'll continue to update the full council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's been a very busy summer. Even though we had a couple of dark meetings, I know the council and the mayor and myself, we've all been busy going to business, ribbon cuttings for new businesses, small businesses in Garden Grove, some large businesses that are coming in. I know Crunch Fitness is, is going into the old Albertson's location in District 2. So that's exciting. That's moving along, construction right now. You know, we, the Don Wash Auditorium recently, the Garden Grove Unified School District dedicated, rededicated the Don Wash Auditorium, beautiful remodel there. If you get a chance to go through there or go to a, a function over there, I would recommend it. We've got a new Starbucks over here on Euclid near City Hall. The Elvis Festival was very successful. Everybody enjoyed Labor Day. The Michael Mansour Stadium dedication was, was outstanding. I was able to go to Christ Fest at the Christ Cathedral, which was very interesting to, you see different denominations coming together at the Catholic Church. And, you know, people, Music Festival is what it is, so that was very good. And I did have the opportunity to go and represent the city. The mayor and the council and staff at Southern California Edison had a work... and staff at Southern California Edison had a workshop that we did up north to see what Southern California Edison, how they're handling new, the new challenges to managing their grid, because they're normally used to producing power, transmitting power, and distributing power. Well, now we have a lot of new, new energy coming online, wind, solar, things like that, produced by other people that are going onto the grid. So they're kind of reinventing their, themselves on how they manage the grid, and I think it's going to be to benefit to all of us, ratepayers, to know as electeds, and for me to transmit that information, is that, you know, we're all working together to make sure that things are done right so we can keep our rates down, but we still have reliable power throughout the state, because about 25% of our power from down here in Southern California comes from up north with hydroelectric power. So without water up there flowing, pushing those generators, we're not going to have any power down here. So very informative, got a lot of information, and a lot of things happening there, and just, things are going well in Southern California as far as construction and business. So I know today we had, there was a business expo for the Asian Pacific, Korean Business Expo at the Great Wolf, that was very good, and a lot of small businesses and bankers getting together and starting new businesses, so it's a great time. If you're ever interested and you need help, contact the city, and we can get you in touch with the right people. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Tu Hau Nguyen.
Well, I just have two things regarding to, just want to echo regarding to the memorial dedication for the Michael Mansour ceremony, it was very touchy, it's a, I feel very honored to attend, to dedicate to the heroes, especially for Garden Grove, he's, you know, die and saving his teammate, so I think that's a, that's a great way to kind of dedicate to the heroes. And the second thing is, is the school start, and I, I just want to make sure all the kids, children, when they walk to school, be very careful, look after each others, don't go along, along to school, and make sure, keep your eye out for the traffic, especially when you ride a bike, make sure safe, safety is the first thing to pay attention to. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
First, I'd like to say happy birthday, Charles, wherever you are. Second thing, myself, the City Manager Scott Stiles and Councilmember Tu Hau Nguyen will be traveling to Sacramento tomorrow through Friday for the League of California Cities 2017 Annual Conference. I'm very excited to attend and see what positions the league will be taking on policies. Excuse me. And I believe there's going to be an expo where we get to go and see different vendors and hopefully bring back lots of good information to the City of Garden Grove. And I would like to chime in on what Councilmember Tu Hau Nguyen said regarding back to school. I know there's been a lot of conversations in District 6 regarding an area near Trask and Roxy, so please make sure to be extra safe when you're driving in that area. If there's residents there who would like to share their concerns with me, please feel free to contact me so we can discuss that issue a little bit more. Thank you.
Councilmember Cloughenstein.
I want to just mention that Michael Mansour Stadium dedication as well. I had the privilege of going to high school with Michael and calling him a friend, and so it was a very emotional evening for me, as it was for a lot of the students that went to school with him. I went to Garden Grove High School, obviously, and so it was, it was a great night and such an honor, and the stadium looks absolutely beautiful. On another note, on a serious note, Vector Control District has put out some warnings about the 80s mosquito. It's a little different than the regular biting mosquito, this is a more aggressive mosquito that bites during the day. They're black and white in color, and so if you are at your property, at your house, out and about in town, and you are being bit by this mosquito, it is in Garden Grove, people are being bit by it, please contact Vector Control. You can reach them at ocvector.org or call 714-971-2421. As the summer is closing, the weather's still warm, please remember to dump and drain your standing water, and again, contact Vector Control or myself if you have any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Buoi.
Over the past, I guess, numerous Vietnamese-American groups, charity groups, as well as business have been working relentlessly to help storm victims, disaster reliefs, with the, starting with the Sandy Storm, you know, 911, of course, 911, Sandy Storm, Katrina, and most recently the flood in San Jose, as well as the past couple weeks, the storm, Harvey Storm, and now the Irma Storm. Last week, I was touched to attend one of the, you know, relief effort, fundraising efforts by the group called Viet Love for Texas. In that single day, they raised more than $400,000 to, to help the victims, and they are continuing to, to raise the monies. Just a few days earlier, the, and that was done in, at the parking lot in Fountain Valley. But just a few days before that, SET and SBTN TV station, a local Vietnamese station, as well as with broadcasting over the cable TV and DirecTV, they met and do a nationwide fundraising that raised more than half a million dollars. And there are many other groups within the Vietnamese-American community here in Garden Grove and Orange County are raising money to help. Yesterday, one of the Vietnamese-American billionaire, Mr. Kiêu Hoàng, had donated $5 million to the Houston victims, and in March of this year, he donated $5 million to the flood victim of San Jose. So I realize that some of these groups are in Garden Grove, but many are in the local cities. But I think it is very important to recognize their generosity and their hard work and their dedication to helping others. So I would like to present them, this group, the certificate of recognition, I would like to, because they are scattered all over, I would like to present them here at the city council, and I would like tonight to ask the city council for approval to present a certificate of recognition to, to their effort. I think we should honor them and encourage them, as well as many others, to, you know, to chime in and help others who are in need. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have several items.
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I would like to ask, right, so that's a motion, I would like to ask the city council approval, because I got to have your approval in order to present that, brand those certificate here at the city council.
It's actually a motion to agendize it for the next meeting.
For the next meeting, yeah.
And he needs a second and a majority approval to get on the agenda.
Sure, and I'll second, I'll be happy to second that. And it's just for a certificate, right?
Right, it's just a certificate to recognize the effort and thank you and encourage them to continue to do that.
Okay. Motion, a second, call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, thank you. I have several different items. The first one is I just want to congratulate Mayor Pro Tem Phat Buoi for his efforts in championing the creation of the Emperor Quang Trung statue. That was a really great event over the weekend where we got to do the unveiling, and I know you put a lot of effort over a lot of time and works on that. And I just wanted to kind of frame a little perspective on why I'm bringing this up, is I think there's been a lot of discussion recently in, in the area about just the changing nature of Little Saigon, and this is, in the first generation, as refugees came over and sort of huddled together out of safety and security with their families and whatnot, it was a, it was a gathering spot for local Vietnamese-American refugees to, to come. Over the last couple generations, as the Vietnamese community has thrived and flourished, and people have obtained college degrees and doctoral degrees and whatnot, we now have, you know, second generation of doctors, lawyers, engineers, all that sort of thing, and now third generation coming up. And the area is transitioning to where Vietnamese-Americans don't need to live in Little Saigon out of necessity, but rather because it's a, it's becoming a spot, it's becoming almost a tourist destination. I think that's kind of the point, as we transition from first, second, to third generation in our Little Saigon community, doing things like this help commemorate the area to kind of create a sense of place around our Vietnamese-American heritage that we have in the city, which is so special. So this was a complicated effort that involved a private commercial property owner dedicating 5,000 square feet of land, and private contribution efforts for, I think it was about $60,000 or $70,000 to make it happen. And so this was not a city-funded, statue city-funded effort, but I just want to congratulate Mayor Pro Tem Phat Buoi for all his hard work effort in bringing that about. Second item, I had actually asked how this agendizes it slipped through the cracks, but I'll bring it up anyways. This is another one where I would like to ask for something to be agendized at the next meeting as a voting item, and it pertains to the Main Street Commission. So just in, in a nutshell, as we've had our reimagine campaign going on for several years now, several successful open streets events, the fruits of those efforts paying off in the form of tangible projects coming forward, Cottage Industries Project, Steel Craft Project, the LFA guys taking over the Garden Amphitheater, Barco, just a whole lot of, even the Jamboree Housing Project in this area. And the area is changing, so our downtown is no longer just that one little strip of Main Street, but it's being augmented all the way from 9th to Nutwood. I think this will be a multi-step process to really fill this in, and it will probably involve discussions with the GGBA, or the Downtown Business Association, which is a private association of the property owners, nothing directly to do with the city, although the city could probably provide sort of research and resources towards helping them augment and expand that association to be in accordance with where we're going with the future of the downtown area. So, long story short, I would like to propose bringing back for the next meeting an item to consider renaming the Main Street Commission to be, hereafter called the Downtown Commission, so it syncs up with the GGBA. And then also earlier, we accepted Andrew Hubbard's resignation, so we need to fill at least that spot, and I think we should take a, just a fresh look at the composition of that, that board makeup, and make sure that we have adequate representation of property owner interests and business interests that are so relevant to everything that we have, all the excitement we have in, in this area. Possibly at a future date, we would consider even changing up kind of the scope of the, of this commission. I think right now it's purely focused on Main Street, and I think that's still okay for now, but as some of these other projects open in the next year or so, maybe we try and augment the scope and, and revise just the wording of the ordinance, I'm not proposing we do all that right now, we could take it in steps. Perhaps we even augment the size of that board so that we can include more stakeholders, because there's some really exciting new faces coming to town that could add a lot of creativity and entrepreneurialism to the way things are being done in downtown. So to make a short story long, I'd like to agendize, like to make a motion that we agendize the renaming of the Main Street Commission to the Downtown Commission, and then taking a look at the reorganization of that board at our next meeting. I'll second that. Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. I have one more item, but I'll ask City Manager Scott Stiles, do you have anything else you want to add, or?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. With that, we do have a closed session item after this, will we be reporting back out afterwards, presumably? Possibly?
Possibly, yes.
Okay. So we're going to adjourn tonight in memory of Robert Walker Senior. I have a whole script that I would like to read, I believe his family is watching on and going to be able to, to capture this moment. So, "Robert Walker Senior, also known affectionately as Wild Man Bob, was truly a Renaissance man. He had a tremendous respect for his father, who raised him to be self-sufficient, hardworking, and to use only what you needed and respect what remained. He was an avid hunter, tracker, archery expert, and gunsmith, and he could garden, can food, bake, cook, and barbecue with the best of them. And in fact, he created a small business of his own that he sold beef jerky, salsa, and his famous barbecue sauce and rub. Bob was now retired from being a longtime supervisor in the construction business, and if you ever visited his house, you were fortunate to witness how he used his considerable construction and woodworking skills, both inside and outside his home. If you were his friend, new or old, you were often the recipient of one of his amazing woodworking creations, or some of his delicious barbecue, homemade breads, vegetable casseroles, et cetera. He also used his considerable talents and skills to teach free disaster preparedness and gun safety classes for the community at large, and was one of three major ambassadors for his immediate Palm Street neighborhood. He also started the Garden Grove Neighbors Helping Neighbors Facebook page, which exemplified his philosophy as a longtime resident of Garden Grove, that we should all work together and help one another. Bob was devoted to his wife, children, friends, public safety, our country, and God. He was also dedicated to Garden Grove and was a regular and engaged fixture at our city council meetings. He was a generous, compassionate, kind, funny, multi-talented, decent, hard-working, confident, but humble, and truly good man. He knew no strangers, he was hired by entertainment, sports, business celebrities to take them on hunting trips, and yet he treated everyone the same. If you were hurting or in need, Bob would give you the shirt off his back. Robert Walker Senior will be greatly missed by many, many people. Although his name was Wild Man, I always told him that the W really stood for wonderful, because that's what he was, and truly one of the last good guys that are so hard to find nowadays. See you in heaven, Wild Man." And with that, we will adjourn to closed session. And with that, we will adjourn to closed session.